Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. It's April 16th, 2018. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Teeter.
Here.
Councilmember Madera.
Present.
Councilmember Frank.
Present.
Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
Councilmember Elliott.
Present.
Councilmember Hughesman. Councilmember Guardiola.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, everyone's here except for Mr. Hughesman, and I'm open for a motion to allow him an excused absence for missing this evening. Mr. Teeter.
Like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Hughesman tonight for missing this meeting. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Douglas.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to allow for that excused absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'd like to ask everybody in the audience to stand and join me for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like the staff to pass around the microphone and allow the audience to introduce themselves, please.
Thelma Cole.
Thank you.
Tony Adameo Parks Recreation.
Nancy Klaske, Colorado State Forest Service.
Mike Brown Parks and Recreation.
Carolyn Keith Parks Recreation and Golf.
Maria DeAndre Public Works.
Ryan Lance, Human Resources.
Brennan Mendez, Risk Manager.
Shirley Messick, Human Resources.
Scott Ne.
Ralph Nance, Front Range Excavating.
Good evening. Michelle Furtig Hill Commerce City Economic Development.
Tom Pies Innovative Mechanical Solutions.
Sherry Pies Innovative Mechanical Solutions.
Eric Hickson, Glove Wagon.
Eric Berg, the Glove Wagon.
Michelle Claymore Economic Development.
Renee Bullock.
Craig Fichette Del West.
David Foster, Foster Graham.
All right, thank you all for being here this evening. We'll get right into our agenda. We're going to start off with recognitions. Today, we have the Arbor Day Proclamation and Tree City USA recognition. I'd like to invite Tony Adameo and Nancy Klaske from Colorado State Forest Service Forward to present the city with the Tree City USA recognition.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council. Evening. On behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation in Gulf, it's my pleasure to be here tonight, celebration of Arbor Day in Commerce City and the presentation of the Tree City USA Award. In celebration of Arbor Day this Friday, April 20th, we will hand out some tree seedlings at the Eagle Point Recreation Center. In 2017, a total of 366 new trees were planted in Commerce City on city projects and throughout our parks. At this time, I'd like to introduce Nancy Klaske, Colorado State Forest Service, to present Commerce City with its 27th consecutive Tree City USA Award.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks to the mayor and the council for making time on the agenda tonight to have me here. The Arbor Day Foundation and Colorado State Forest Service recognize that there is no automatic renewal each year and that cities must meet four standards. Those standards are: a tree board or professional tree manager is hired by the community. You must have a basic public tree care ordinance in place, a community forestry program spending at least $2 per capita on urban forestry, and an Arbor Day observance. The Tree City USA program was started in 1976 by the Arbor Day Foundation. It is a nationwide movement that provides the framework necessary for communities to manage and expand their public trees. We are glad to see that Commerce City continues to put emphasis on the importance of this program. While aesthetic values are important, the support and investment you make in your urban trees do much more for your community. First of all, they save you money by conserving energy, increasing property values, and giving higher shopping district revenues. They also give many social benefits, which include greater community connection, reduced crime, and overall health and well-being. According to research done by the Arbor Day Foundation, 92% of Americans recognize personal benefits of planting trees in their communities. Trees are improving neighborhoods and communities across the country and are the only infrastructure that actually increases in value over time. For cities that appreciate the benefits trees provide and dedicate themselves to caring for them, participation in the Tree City USA program ensures that their investment in community trees is profitable and long-lasting. We continue to learn more about these benefits and others our tree programs provide in our communities. So, thank you Commerce City for all the hard work and for making this program a priority. Congratulations on your Tree City USA recognition for 2018.
Great, thank you. I want you guys to stay there at the podium because we do have a proclamation, and then we'll come down and take some pictures. So, I'd like to ask the city attorney to please read the proclamation for Arbor Day.
City of Commerce City, Colorado, Proclamation 1801. Whereas the City of Commerce City desires to recognize and observe Arbor Day along with others across the nation and throughout the world. And whereas the City of Commerce City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the 27th consecutive year. And whereas the City Council and staff wish to promote an interest in the planting of trees in residential areas as well as city-owned parks, trails, and open space. And whereas trees in our city increase the property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City declares April 20th, 2018, as Arbor Day, recognized with activities such as providing tree seedlings and tree care information to the community. Be it further resolved that, council urges all residents to support efforts to care for our trees, woodlands, and support the city's community forestry program.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the proclamation. Mr. Teeter.
Like to make a motion to approve Proclamation 1801 Arbor Day Proclamation and Tree City USA recognition.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. I do have a little bit of discussion. First and foremost, I want to thank the U.S. Forestry Program and our city staff. We would not be getting these awards if it wasn't for the staff that takes the time to make sure that we're meeting all the requirements necessary. So, Tony, thank you to you and your team that work on this specifically. Because 27 years in a row, I know you've been here that long, and you've worked on every one of them, and we appreciate the effort by our staff as well. If there be no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We'll come down and take a picture. Okay, next on the agenda is National Small Business Week. I'd like to invite Michelle Claymore from Economic Development. Director Forward, tell us a little bit about Small Business Week.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council members. April 29th through May 5th is National Small Business Week. This annual recognition is hosted by the U.S. Small Business Administration and is a chance for communities to recognize and celebrate the critical contributions of America's entrepreneurs, small business owners, and small business owners. Every day, they're working to grow small businesses, create 21st century jobs, drive innovation, and increase America's global competitiveness. The proclamation before you is in support of all of the small business owners that choose to operate their businesses in Commerce City. Small businesses are an important component of the city's economy. There are over 1,400 businesses within the city, and a majority of them have less than 20 employees. As you know, the Commerce City Small Business Resource Center operates in Derby and assists small businesses with training and one-on-one counseling from the North Metro Denver Small Business Development Center, Adelante, and other small business partners. In honor of National Small Business Week, it is my pleasure to introduce you to owners of two small businesses that have recently moved to Commerce City and are here tonight representing all the small businesses in our city to help accept this proclamation. The first is Eric Hickson, owner of the Glove Wagon. Eric, you want to stand up? Thank you. And he is joined by Eric Berg, who is the Sales Manager. Glove Wagon is a wholesale distributor of work gloves and safety and protection products. Mr. Hickson recently finished construction of a 16,000-square-foot industrial building in the Mountain View Industrial Park near 96th and Havana Street. The Glove Wagon will occupy half of the building, and Mr. Hickson is leasing the other half to Sherry and Tom Pies. They are owners of Innovative Mechanical Solutions, a company that designs, installs, maintains, and repairs HVAC systems in new commercial and industrial buildings. Ms. Pies is a former Northland City Councilwoman. The Glove Wagon and Innovative Mechanical Solutions are bringing 18 new jobs to Commerce City. And City Council members are invited to Innovative Mechanical Solutions' grand opening this Thursday, April 19th, at 3:30. I believe you all received an invitation from Lisa earlier. I ask that you help welcome the Glove Wagon and Innovative Mechanical Solutions to Commerce City and recognize National Small Business Week and all the small businesses that choose to be in Commerce City with this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. I first like to say welcome to our community, and we're glad to have you and look forward to having you expand in the future because you're going to do well here. I want you to stick around for just a minute. We have another proclamation, and I'd like to invite all of you up to take a picture with us as well. I would like to ask for a motion to approve a proclamation for Small Business Week. Mr. Teeter.
Make a motion to approve the proclamation for National Small Business Week.
Thank you. Mr. Madera.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Will the city attorney please read the proclamation?
Thank you. City of Commerce City, Colorado, Proclamation 1807. Whereas the City of Commerce City joins the U.S. Small Business Administration in promoting and recognizing National Small Business Week during April 29th through May 5th of 2018. And whereas from storefronts, shops, to high-tech startups, small businesses are the backbone of the city's economy. And whereas Commerce City has over 1,400 businesses, and over 80% of them have less than 20 employees. And whereas America's 28 million small businesses create nearly two out of three jobs in the country. And whereas the city achieves City Council's goal to develop a balanced and vibrant economy, to improve socioeconomic status. And small businesses are a crucial mechanism for socioeconomic advancement. And whereas the City of Commerce City supports and joins in the national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best: grow their business, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City honors National Small Business Week and all the city's small businesses for their entrepreneurial spirit that keep the city, state, and national economy growing stronger.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. If you all meet me down front. Okay, next item on our agenda is citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the city council on business affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before the city council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate hearing. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. After, okay, so I know we only have one person that signed up for citizen communication tonight, and we're all going to need to pull our wallets out. I'd like to invite Thelma Cole forward. It's always one of the evenings of the year that I look forward to. Good evening, Thelma.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm glad to be here. Of course, this is for the pancake breakfast. I want to sell some tickets, and I'll get the city council to start, and that's what I'm here for. So, I'm hoping you'll help us out. It's the 5th of May. For any of you that want to go, it's $5 if you buy the ticket ahead of time, and if you get it at the door, it's $6. And it's a fundraiser, and then we'll also have a raffle for quilt that the quilt makers have made, and it's gorgeous, so I'm ready for the money if you're ready.
I'll take two, Thelma. Come on up. You need some money?
Well, Thelma's picking up the money from us. I got stories I can tell about Thelma. I can start back when, but well, maybe we ought to skip those on Thelma.
I will tell you, for those council members who are new, now's the time to buy your tickets because Thelma will just call you every day until you do. So, get your money out and get it over with. And anybody in the audience that would like to participate in the pancake breakfast, Thelma's here and has tickets available. It's always a great thing for our seniors. Every year, they do a pancake breakfast. I know Renee Bullock's in the audience. He'll take some. Dave? Are you good for some pancake? No, you, you, don't look back. Are you good for some pancake breakfast? Craig? See, Craig? 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 Pancake breakfast. Right next door to where you want to develop homes. It's a good thing. I pushed him as hard as I can, Thelma.
Need some cash? Need some cash?
Need some cash? The accountant at the end needs cash.
Just one Patty's working.
So, here's the deal, Thelma. You're more than welcome to come next Monday night, and people will have had an opportunity to know they would need to bring cash for those who didn't buy. How's that? That's a good deal.
Crystal.
Not just you, everybody, anybody.
Crystal, you wrote one?
He's got money. Well. I got a $100 bill, but I don't think she can break it. All right, Thelma. There's some folks in the audience that might help you out, too. All right. I need to ask, is there anyone else in the audience that is here for citizen communication that did not get the opportunity to sign up? Raise your hand so we can make sure that you get the opportunity. Seeing none, I'm going to move on out of citizen communication into approval of the minutes. We have the minutes of February 5th, 2018. I'm open for a motion to approve those minutes.
I'm, I think I'm on that for excuse.
All right. Well, it doesn't say, or you would already.
Okay, all right. I'll make it.
So, you can. Mr. Diaz.
Move to approve the meeting minutes of February 5th, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Minutes are taken care of. He was excused. All right, so we have a problem. He said he was excused? No? All right.
Yeah. If Councilman Teeter could not make the motions, he wasn't present at the last meeting, if we could have someone else do it, that'd be.
Well, I had the motion was from Mr. Diaz. I need a different second then. Okay, Mr. Guardiola seconds the minutes of the 5th. I don't know why we're screwed up here, but I have a motion, second. All those in favor, again, on the minutes, signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay.
If a member is present and still wants to vote on the minutes, they may certainly do so.
Not a problem. So, we had it covered either way. We did it twice to make sure. Better safe than sorry. All right, resolutions. Resolution 2018-28. Does council have any questions regarding this resolution? Seeing none? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and address the council on this resolution? Seeing none? I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter.
Like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-28.
Mr. Guardiola.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution 2018-28. The city attorney, please read the title.
Commerce City Resolution Number 2018-28. Resolution approving change orders to construction contract agreement for Sand Creek remediation and restoration project.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item is ordinances on first reading. We have Ordinance 2160. Is there anyone on the council that has any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and address the council on this ordinance? Seeing none? I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter.
Like to approve Ordinance 2160 on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Councilman Frank. Have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 2160 on first reading. The city attorney, please read the title.
Commerce City Ordinance 2160. An Ordinance Creating Section 12, 2011 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code Regarding Entrance Upon Closed Public Grounds.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. There, it came up now. Guardiola. Wardiola?
Okay, hold on, we're gonna try to re-vote and see if the button will work.
Okay. All right, for the record, ordinance 2160's passed this evening, eight in favor, one excused absence. Moving on to ordinances on second reading. Ordinance Z-898-18, this item was not included on a consent agenda because it did not pass unanimously on the first reading. Need to know if anyone in the audience would like to come forward and address the council on this ordinance.
And I do have one advisement to make with respect to any members of the public who might want to comment. Because this is on second reading, we would ask that you not present any new information for consideration for the council members. If you could, you may reiterate certain things that have already been brought forth for their consideration. If there is new information, then council would want to...
Continue it?
To continue that at a later date.
Re-open a hearing? All right, is there any, anything, anybody wants to talk about that's already relevant to the hearing? Mr. Foster?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Now it's on?
Now it's on? Okay. Usually I talk and nobody can hear me anyhow, so it wasn't any different. But David Foster, here on behalf of the Aragon family, and as I spoke with the city attorney before the hearing, this was, obviously, you're having a second reading again on this particular property, and the issue, because I watched your hearing from two weeks ago, and Councilman Hughesman, who's not here, had a problem or some concern about the fact that the property owner to the north, as was discussed at our hearing about six weeks ago, had a public improvement agreement, and my client with this rezoning didn't have a public improvement agreement, and that there was an inequity about that particular issue. And that was something that I had mentioned in my presentation, and that was, this was a rezoning that was initially started by the city about four or five years ago, because there was a map error in your zoning map, where half of the property was still zoned R2, and the other half of the property was zoned I2. And in addition to that, Mr. Nance, who owns property on the south side, owned a little strip of property to gain access to his south of ours, and it divided our property in half. And so the whole purpose of this rezoning in Platt was to make sure that each of the parcels was properly identified, and that the uses that exist today, which have been in existence as we testified for some 30 or 40 years, continue to exist, and so that's why we created the PUD, and that we weren't changing anything about this particular property or the particular uses with this rezoning in this Platt, but we were recognizing all of the uses that have existed there for all these years. And what we also mentioned was that at the time that a use were to change, that this property is redeveloped, because this isn't a redevelopment of the site, this is a cleaning up of the site, but when this property is redeveloped, and it will be redeveloped at some point, then a public improvements agreement will be entered into, and public improvements will be made. And I just wanted to clarify that, Mr. Mayor, because of the, it's a rather odd rezoning in the city. You almost never have a chance to have a property with a map error, so it's exciting for land use attorneys, it's probably less exciting for anybody else, but that was the history of this particular site. So thanks for giving me a chance to come up.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this before we can consider ordinance Z-898-18 on second reading? Seeing none? I want to know if there's anyone on council that has any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion for ordinance 2160, not, let me see, 2160 on second and final reading, no. Z-898-18, that's a typo. Councilwoman Frank?
I motion to approve ordinance Z-898-18 on second and final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Teter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance Z-898-18 on second reading, will the city attorney please read the title?
Commerce City Ordinance Z-898-18, An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance and Zoning Map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, for rezoning to PUD Zone District and approving a PUD Zone document for the properties described in Exhibit A attached heretofore and made apart hereof located at 8470 and 8510 East 86th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance Z-898-18 is approved on second reading. All right, moving on. Next, thank you all for coming in. Next, we have some presentations. We're gonna start with the Information Technology Department overview. I have Justin come up, the IT Director, and he's gonna make the presentation. Good evening, Justin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So this evening, I'm gonna walk you through, as soon as the screen comes up, I'm gonna walk you through an overview of the IT Department. And where I really want to start is to really give you, state the mission and vision of IT. So the mission of IT is to strategically improve operational efficiencies and improve city business processes through innovative solutions, effective technology implementation, and world-class IT service delivery. The vision of IT, so really what we're striving to be and where we want to go, is to be a recognized national leader in delivering local government technology solutions by using technology in the most effective and efficient manner to support city business processes and to promote a quality community for a lifetime. Little bit of the structure of IT. IT is structured into four divisions, administration, operations, GIS, and application and business services, and as we go forth in this presentation, I'll dive into each division a little more Here is the IT org chart. You can see those four divisions that I described. One thing I do want to say about the team that we have in place within the IT Department, we have a really good mixture of very talented IT professionals, but we have a good mixture of folks that have been here quite a long time in the city, and then we have some new folks that bring some new perspectives to the table, so I really believe we have a really good mixture on the team. So a little bit of background, I'll actually start with myself, a little bit of background. I started as the IT Director in January 2016. Educationally, I have a bachelor's from the University of Wyoming, I have a master's from Shadrin State College, and currently I'm finishing in the final stages of my PhD from the University of Nebraska. My background prior to coming to the city was really a mixture of public and private sector experience. In the public sector, I spent a lot of time in education, K-12 and higher education, various technology roles. I also spent some time teaching at the college level as well. I also had some private sector experience in various roles, specifically before I came to Commerce City, I was managing multiple markets for Conica Minolta's IT Managed Service branch. And just kind of a fun fact, I have a passion for coaching basketball, so I have some prior experience coaching high school boys' basketball. So the first division I'll talk about is the admin division. Really, this division provides the admin support and really overall management to all divisions of IT, focuses on things like AP process, invoice management, scheduling meetings, things of that nature, and handles technology procurement as well for the city. The next division I'll describe for you is my operations division. So operations is led by Doug Heineman, he's the IT manager. He's actually been with Commerce City for 34 years. The first 10 years was actually for the police department, so he's been with IT for 24 years. He has a bachelor's from Regis University and a master's from the University of Denver. And a fun fact about Doug is he's an active member of the Civil Air Patrol. So the operations division is really, really broken into two different work groups. The first is service desk support, and that really is the first line for IT. So when city staff pick up the phone and call IT, they send an email in, they submit a request via our portal, that group is the first one to respond to that request. They also focus on managing our computer hardware, that also includes the computers in the patrol cars as well. They also manage computer software, and then the AV for the city. The second part of that division is infrastructure services, and that is really the backend services. So the network, the wireless, the phone system, security, backups, those types of things is what that group supports. The next division I'll talk about is GIS. Jamie Geeson is the GIS coordinator. She joined Commerce City in 2013. She has a bachelor's from Metro State, and even though I didn't make it on the slide, she has started her master's degree from the University of Denver as well. She spent 11 years with the City of Thornton in GIS, and then she was promoted to GIS coordinator in July 2016. And the GIS team really focuses on really two major things, data analysis and mapping services, really to all city departments and to the public. They spend a considerable amount of time also providing GIS training to various departments across the city. The last division I'll talk about is the Application and Business Services Division. Steve Moore is the head of that division. He actually joined Commerce City last year, in 2017. He has a bachelor's from Texas A&amp;M, and prior to coming to Commerce City, he has about 30 years of private sector experience, focused on software development, application management, and business analysis. And a fun fact about Steve, he actually holds three U.S. patents related to IT. He's been a great addition to the team. This division really focuses on application services, business analysis, really just application management across the city, training services, and they also oversee the project management across the city, related to IT. So I want to point out a few key council IT services that we provide for you. The first is Legistar and Granicus. We also provide the Invisio Work Plan Tool and the Public Dashboard that we rolled out. Office 365 for email and calendaring, the CRM system, the AV here within council chambers. And then we also provide services for Channel 8 and the city website. Now, kind of how we break up responsibilities on those items for Channel 8 and the city website is IT owns the vendor relationship, we own the backend infrastructure for those services, but the communications division actually creates and manages the content. This next slide will really show you some of the current outsourced IT professional services. The first one I wanted to share with you was, we have an annual security audit and assessment, and then we have various security investigations that happen throughout the year. In 2017, we spent roughly $27,000 on that type of work outsourced. We also outsource our tier, really tier two and a half to three audiovisual support, project implementations for new AV, and maintenance. Kind of breaking that up for our spends in 2017, for maintenance and support services related to AV, we spent $14,000 outside, and then for project professional services and implementation, we spent $25,000. The next item that we outsource, and it's kind of a mixture, it all just depends, is the city staff training resources. So some training, as I mentioned earlier, is provided in-house within IT, but certain specialized training, if we don't have the expertise in-house, we may bring in a trainer to help supplement our staff. In 2018, we're anticipating spending about $23,000 on those types of services. We also spent about $9,000 in GIS consulting in 2017. And then the last bullet point is for just project professional services. So I picked out some of the bigger projects we've worked on, our network phone system refresh, server and storage refresh, SharePoint, Invisio, new city website, and the project professional services that we outsourced related to those projects was around $204,000 in 2017. Like I said, that's not a consistent spend every year, it varies each year depending on the projects and the needs. One thing I wanted to share with you this evening as well is, in 2017, IT rolled out a five-year strategic plan. It was really the first comprehensive, all-inclusive IT strategic plan that the city has had. And a couple of things about that plan, it's a living document, so we're gonna do minimum yearly updates to the plan, and also as well as trying to forecast out the next year of that plan, the best we can within technology and IT, because technology changes so frequently, that it's hard to predict five years out, we do the best we can, but that's why those yearly updates are critical to that plan. Couple of key points to the plan, it is a cloud-first strategy when feasible. What I mean by that is when we're evaluating new technologies, new implementations, we definitely lean towards cloud, but there's a number of factors that drive that decision. So cost is gonna be a big one, what's the one-time cost versus the ongoing cost, what's in the best interest of the city? There's also security requirements, compliances to think through as well, and performance. Sometimes moving to the cloud doesn't provide the best performance as well, so we've got to evaluate all those factors when we're looking at new technology implementations. A big focus is to implement industry best practices in IT, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few more slides. And we're also focusing on technologies that ensure efficient and effective city business processes. What I mean by that is, you know, we're not just gonna implement this new shiny technology because it's shiny and new, there really has to be a driving factor as far as the city goes. How is that technology helping city staff be more efficient or more effective in their positions as well? And then the last bullet point there is just centralizing citywide IT services. So instead of having IT professionals embedded in certain departments, really centralizing that across the city, and then we provide that service to all the departments. Part of that strategic plan came with really eight big focus areas, and they're fairly broad, but all the work that we do in IT falls within one of these focus areas. The first one is technology infrastructure, and then alignment of IT services is the next one, world-class customer service, community information, and that's really focused on, you know, providing the public online access to city information and services. The next area was organizational improvement, goes a little bit to what I described earlier, making sure that we're improving the organization through technology. Staffing, and that's focused on more the IT staffing, making sure we have the best possible and qualified staff within the IT Department, accessibility and mobility, and then the last one is cybersecurity. There are a number of key initiatives within IT right now, there's a few I wanted to share with you this evening that we're working on. The first one is infrastructure upgrades. So we've been refreshing a number of the infrastructure within IT, that infrastructure has been end of life, so we've been working to get that current. The two big projects we're working on related to that right now is the server and storage refresh, which is nearing an end, and then we're gonna move into a wireless refresh. We're also working on disaster recovery planning, so what do we do if something happens in a disaster scenario at the civic center? How do we make sure that we're getting backups? How do we restore city technology services? We're also heavily involved in the IT Department on the Bison Ridge and the Eagle Point remodel as far as implementing the new technology in those buildings. A number of changes happening with Channel 8 currently that we're working on in collaboration with the Communications Division. We've also been working to roll out SharePoint within IT, really we're rolling that out to city staff. And then I'll spend a little bit more time talking about those IT best practices that I mentioned a few slides prior. The strategic plan is a big focus on making sure that we're aligning what we do in IT with industry best practices. There's a number of things we're doing and going to do on that. Some of the things I wanted to highlight right now is we've adopted a methodology around IT service delivery. It's called ITIL. ITIL sometimes it's referred to, but it really is a best practice on how to deliver IT service. So we've implemented that, a big push to get all the IT staff trained in that. I'm happy to report within the last 12 months that 75% of my staff have not only attended the training, but they've also become certified in the ITIL foundations. Not many organizations have that high a number, so I'm very proud of that as well. Couple of other things we're working on is we've actually standardized our project management philosophy... philosophy and just our process within IT. And the idea behind that is that whoever within IT may manage a technical project, I want a consistent experience for our city staff, so they know what to expect from IT when we deliver a project. And we've also been working very hard to the development of standard operating procedures, making sure we have top-notch documentation within IT. And then, we've also implemented an IT service management platform, and that's really aligned back to those best practices I mentioned earlier. It really enables us in IT to track and report on KPIs and just how well we're doing. And then, lastly, we've worked on developing IT service levels with every city department. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, I believe, in the next slide. A couple of other initiatives I'll touch on briefly: we're also looking to, and we are increasing, technology training resources to city staff, right? Technology changes so often, there's so much technology, it's critical that we don't miss the training portion. So, we've been working on a number of initiatives to increase technology training offered to city staff. We've also been developing an IT security program, right? So, that's focused on not only reacting to security issues that come up, but also being proactive in that as well. We're also evaluating our software and application portfolio across the city to make sure that's still meeting the business requirements and business needs of the organization. We've also been working on improving and increasing GIS maps available on the city website. Work continues on that as well. And then, lastly, the online sales tax project that we've been working with the Finance Department A couple of key performance indicators I wanted to share with you today within IT. So, I mentioned earlier that IT's been meeting with every single city department to really discuss, develop, and agree upon service levels, and we've been successful in that. We've actually developed the service levels with every single city department, and now, as of April 1st, we're starting to track those. The idea behind that is we're going to meet every quarter with all city departments, review kind of how we performed in the previous quarter from a service level perspective, and then, make any adjustments we need to, right? If a department needs service levels from IT to increase, we can look at that. If maybe we didn't, maybe the service level needs to be decreased for certain reasons, we will evaluate that on a quarterly basis as well. And then, later on this year, we're going to be working on developing a formal kind of survey for IT services, and we'll deliver that to city staff as well. So, some key statistics within IT I wanted to share with you. So, in the last 12 months, IT has actually serviced 4,219 tickets for various different services that we provide. We've worked on 117 changes, and a change is really, an example of a change would be upgrading a software package, upgrading a service that we currently deliver. We worked on 117 of those types of requests. And then, we've also worked on 119 projects in the last 12 months. Some are small, some are larger, but just overall, it's been 119 projects. And that's the end of what I have this evening, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone on council have any questions pertaining to the IT department and their presentation? See, Mr. Madera.
We've been hearing about some of these cities being vulnerable to cyber attacks, so I just want to know what we've been doing as a city in our IT to be proactive in this side and to mitigate that risk.
I didn't catch the first part of that. Could you repeat that?
So, there's been a lot of stories about cities experiencing cyber attacks. I think it's "Make Me Cry" or something, and so, I just wanted to know what we're doing as a city to mitigate that risk.
Yeah, great question. We've actually done a number of things around that. Part of that is that security program that I mentioned earlier. We've already implemented pieces of that security program, so we've added an additional, multiple additional layers of security within the city to protect. So, we've added software to computers, we've added software at the network portions to really help combat some of those cyber securities. I can tell you the technologies that we've put in place have actually stopped a lot of the ransomwares and viruses out there. The one I think you referenced was WannaCry, which was a pretty bad one. It actually affected a lot of businesses and organizations, not only in this country, but throughout the world. We were not affected by that ransomware virus. Now, with that being said, nothing's 100%. All the systems we put in place, there are always folks out there who want to do a couple of things. Either, one, they want to do harm to businesses or organizations. A lot of times, local government can be a target of that. And sometimes, they want to make money, right, with ransomware. Their idea behind ransomware is that they encrypt your files where you can't read them, and then, they want you to pay a fee to, you know, to get those files back. And so, it's a challenging field. It's something we have to stay ahead of. One of the things we've implemented recently is doing annual security audits. So, we have that outside vendor I mentioned earlier that actually comes in with a fresh perspective and really just evaluates our entire security platform, processes we have in place, and really digs deep for about, they're typically in here for three to four months, kind of diving in on a yearly basis. Then, they come back with some recommendations, right? And then, my team remediates those recommendations within a couple of quarters as well. Obviously, we start with the more critical and high ones from that perspective. We're also focusing on training as well. So, we're going to be rolling out a cybersecurity training to city staff as well later this year, so that's part of it as well, because really, what we're facing is multiple cybersecurity threats. We have the external ones, which we're putting those layers of security in to try to stop, and then, we have internal threats as well that we have to factor in as well. Even with internal threats, we have the malicious, right, disgruntled employee and things that we need to make sure our processes are down, are really nailed down. And then, we have the folks that just accidentally clicked on the link, right, the unintentional cybersecurity threat. So, we're trying to address all of those as part of the IT security program.
Thank you. Any other questions? See, Mr. Wardiola.
Thank you. With the current outsourced of all the IT professional services, do you see in the future to ask for positions to get your department to a different level that we're not outsourcing it, or is it just cheaper to outsource positions in these services?
Yeah, we definitely, great question. We definitely evaluate that every year, and I think as needs change, I mean, there could be positions that I ask for in the future depending on how needs change. At this point, I mean, when you start to look at the spends here, and I brought the slide up, to bring in, you know, for instance, I'll give you the top one, a security audit, assessments, and investigation, we spent 27,000 in 2017. The cost that it would, that the city would have to incur to bring in like a cybersecurity analyst would well exceed that cost. So, that's an example where I think it makes sense, and sometimes, it's, you know, in that specific area, it makes sense to bring someone in with an outside perspective, right? A non-biased perspective. But yes, we're always evaluating this, so there may be an ask in the future depending on, you know, where the trends and the spends go.
All right. Mr. Teter.
Yes, thanks for the presentation. I know Adams County Communication Center, where we go through for our dispatch, is one of the highest problems we have at the city for the police department. Does your department work on ways to reduce the CADs or whatever they use, whatever the name is now, they use the Billis on? Are those things that you guys work on also, ways to find using airtime?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, yes, that is, we work very closely with the PD and the AdCom team as well on issues related to, you know, connectivity, to the CAD systems, the records management systems, absolutely. And so, right now, one of the things my team's working on, one of the initiatives within IT, is to really evaluate, you know, ways that we can improve certain services, ways that we can partner with AdCom, ways that we can improve the experience for the officers in the field. So, we're looking at all of that, from mobility to network connection, and just ways that we can make that a better experience. So, yes, my team is definitely involved in that.
Oh, great. Because that bill is continues to go higher and higher.
Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. With, in the IT department, would you consider us more towards, onto business analytics or business intelligence as far as collection of data and how that's processed on a city basis?
Well, I would say it's a little bit of both, right? I think, I think we're, you know, as an organization, as a city, not just within IT, we're trying to make, you know, better decisions. We're trying to rely on data to make some of those decisions. So, I think, I think from that perspective, you know, we're trying, as in the IT department, we're trying to put systems in place that can help city staff make better decisions that are based on, you know, analytics, based on data that we have, so that we can make better business decisions. So, I think there's a strong focus on that. I think I mentioned in my presentation that the Application Business Services Division is really focused on business analysis, making sure that the technology's really ensuring that city staff are efficient and effective. So, you know, we collaborate with every single city department, but we're definitely, that's an area we're trying to improve in, that's an area that we're trying to grow in, I think, as an organization in general.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate all the work you guys are doing, and it's great to get these updates once in a while to make sure we know what's happening in each department. So, thanks again.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Council.
Thank you. All right, next, we're going to have a presentation from our Human Resource Department. Kathy Blakeman. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Let me pull this up. Whoops. This is not my version. Where does it at on this one? It's not my version. This is not. This is what it's going to do. Go to the screen. There you go. Thanks. Different version. So, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Human Resource Department, and we also have risk. That's in HR as well. One of the things that I really value within my department and the way that we do work is we value being strategic partners, and that is to the entire organization. So, that could be management, that could be the employees, departments. And HR is in two divisions. As you can see, we have human resources, and then, we also have Brennan Mendez, and you'll be introduced to him in just a moment, and he does the risk side. So, the mission within HR is, as a trusted resource, HR is committed to strengthening the organization's culture while providing a safe and approachable environment through service and education for the benefit of all employees. So, what I've listed here are some of the key responsibilities that we do within HR. Recruitment and hiring and onboarding, I think that's one of the most important things that we as an HR department can actually do, bringing in good people that are qualified to do the job. We're going to talk about some of these in a little more detail in a future slide. And then, there's total rewards management. So, that goes beyond just compensation and benefits. That goes into many of the other items that are also listed on this slide. It has everything to do with the experience that someone has within the organization. Performance management. A lot of people think of performance management as that evaluation you get once a year, and it is well beyond just that particular form, that particular day. We have a program that's set up here that's about two years old now, we're starting into our third year, actually, of performance management, and it has everything to do with setting goals early, having conversations often, and helping employees to really be successful and have a good experience here by the way that they actually work with their supervisors, and that includes training of supervisors, training of employees in order to be able to do even good self-evaluations. So, that is something that we take good pride in, and we've done a lot of training within the last two years on that. Policies and procedures, something you probably expect to see up there. Employee relations, and that's coaching, that's helping employees, that's helping managers, that's helping anyone that is having any sort of either positive or sometimes challenging experiences. We are available to support the people that are involved. And then, risk, let's see. Also, within training and development, we have a new supervisor university this year. It's something that's new to us. We talked with a lot of supervisors and employees on what they felt needed to be in the supervisor university, so we are just kicking off our first year of that. And then, of course, we have risk management. All of these things have to be done in a legal and compliant manner. We have many mandates that we have to follow, and so, we definitely strive to keep very current on what all of those laws and requirements are and hit those at 100%. Okay. Actually, I want to tell you a little bit more about risk management. No, I'm not. Sorry. This is a little out of my order. Okay. So, this is my team, and we have eight people that are here within my team, and I'm just going to talk to you about just a few of them. And so, what we're going to talk about is myself. I have, start with me. I have 25 years in human resources, and I've been here about five years, and my background is very much in both private and public sector, and I've spent the last 13 years or so in government. And I came from the City of Fort Collins, and there I was the strategic partner manager over a group that did a lot of the employee relations, recruitment, hiring, onboarding, those sorts of things. And then, I started here about five years ago. My degree is in, I can't tell that my notes are not organized here. I have a degree in, an undergraduate degree from the University of Colorado, and that's in psychology. And then, I also have a master's from Webster's University, and that is in something that today would be called project management. And so, and that's out of Webster University. And I also have an SPHR, and I've had that for about 20-something years, and that is a strategic or a senior partner in human resources, and that's something that helps for me to guarantee that I'm going to stay current in all of my knowledge. So, then, I also want to introduce you to Ryan Lance. And Ryan Lance has, he's got about 15 years within human resources, and he's actually been at two different municipalities, Castle Rock and Parker, and then, he also worked for a while at Sports Authority, so he's really happy to be here, obviously. He has an undergraduate degree in communications, and he also has a couple of masters, and both of those are in various levels of communication and human resource development. So, we're very lucky to have him. When he first came here with us, he was, pretty strong emphasis in his benefits and wellness background, but he also had a lot of the other requirements that we needed, so when he came onboard, he actually does the day-to-day watching over the HR department. But I think one of his biggest fortes has everything to do with the way he runs projects. So, he can run a project from start to finish, everything from the design of a project, a project plan, and executing a project and doing a very professional job and all the documentation that's actually involved in a particular project. So, we very much value that, because within the last few years, we have done a lot of work in streamlining a lot of our processes and cleaning up a lot of our processes, getting our house in order, and Ryan's been very instrumental in helping to make those changes within the department. And most of those changes, he actually runs as a project plan, and so, we make sure that we are able to, you know, get things done well and to meet our mark. And then, Brennan Mendez, he's got about 28 years of experience in various levels of risk management, and he has a master's in engineering of...
Safety.
Yep, safety engineering. And I'm going to tell you a little bit more about some of the really awesome things that he has been doing within the organization shortly here in a future slide. So, this is my team here, and we have Ivy. She does the recruitment, hiring, and onboarding now. And then Brennan Mendez, he's got about 28 years of experience in various levels of risk management, and he has a master's in engineering of
Safety?
Yep, safety engineering, and I'm going to tell you a little bit more about some of the really awesome things that he has been doing within the organization shortly here in a future slide. So, this is my team here, and we have Ivy. She does the recruitment, hiring, and onboarding now, and we have Jen next. Both of those ladies have been here about a year or so, and Jen does training and development, and she also does our leave of absences. Tallest guy there, his name's Chuck, and Chuck does our human resource information analysis that we do. That is something new that we added to our department a couple of years back, and he has been great in that arena. He's also taken on benefits. And so, then, of course, the middle person there, you know who that is, and the next two are people that you just recently met. And then there's Shirley. She's been here the longest. There's Shirley, there. She's been here just shy of about 11 years or so, and she is my admin, so she's one that tells me what to do every day. She keeps me highly organized. And then the last person on the end there is Jen. She is my, one of my senior HR people, and she is now doing compensation, and that is my awesome team. So, just some information on the organization. This is just the FTE count. This had been asked, so I thought I would provide it. So, our full-time equivalents, we have 324 at this point, and you can see that broken down into the AFME and the FOP, as well as a non-union. Our variable hour employees, we have 196 of them, and seasonal is 88, and so that puts our total headcount at 608 employees. So, the work objectives that you would see out on our work plan are being an employer of choice and a healthy and safe workforce, and I want to spend a little bit of time telling you what those mean to us and as it pertains to what it is that we're doing in 2018. So, with maintaining vacancies under 11 percent, that encompasses quite a few things. That encompasses people leaving the organization, and that encompasses people coming into the organization as well. But it also has to do with the entire experience that employees have. So, being an employer of choice and maintaining that vacancy isn't just about the HR department, it's about the entire organization. We've got to be competitive. That's a starting point. So, it matters what we do with our benefits. It matters what we're doing with our compensation program, but it has everything to do also with the way that we're running the new performance management program and the experience that everyone is having as it pertains to the performance management. I also think we have a world-class wellness program, and we have an extremely high participation rate this last year. We actually had it up to 85 percent within this last year, and I think that's because there's such a variety of things that employees can do to improve on their health and to participate in this particular program. And they're also offered at various times and locations. There's training on finances even. You can take workout classes, take a cooking class. There's so many different things that can light the fire of every single employee, and so with anywhere between four and six challenges and all the rest of these opportunities, we have people that are highly engaged in our wellness program. In 2018, we are spending a lot of this first quarter and into the second quarter examining every concept within our compensation program. So, we are looking at the actual structure and the way we have that structured. We have benchmarked, and we all do, we benchmark every year as it is, but we're benchmarking at a slightly different level this particular year. We're changing up our philosophy a little bit, and we're doing all of this with the help of a compensation team. So, HR is doing the work, but we're running these ideas through a compensation team, some people that are taking some pretty valued time to sit with us and learn more about compensation and give us various feedback on it, and so we really highly value their input into the work we're doing on our new compensation program. Lot of work is going into benefits, as you all know. That's becoming a more and more challenging place to be and having to make sure that you're not only being competitive, but here at the city, we value options. We value the best possible coverage that we can for our employees, but we're also really focusing quite a bit on the cost effectiveness of these particular programs as well. We're doing a lot of that through analyzing the utilization of our employees. We're training and having a lot of conversations about consumerism, so how are people actually utilizing the program, what actual options are they choosing for themselves and their families. We have a broker, AMA, and we've been working with them on looking for things like trends and new ideas on how to provide this particular benefit to our employees. It's one of our more challenging benefits, and believe it or not, open enrollment is already starting here in a couple of months, the work that we do to get ready for open enrollment. It's a lot of work to be done between now and the November timeframe, and we are really lucky to have a benefits team that has been many of those members with us for quite some period of time, and so they've learned a lot about benefits, and they're very active in helping for us to put together the best possible recommendations to take into Brian. There's some things we did last year, or we came up with last year that are now here for this year, and that has to do with a slight offset for the higher premiums, and that is that by participating in certain things, they get a bit of a cash back, so to speak, to help them, and so if they have a wellness visit, or they do a biometric, or they take a health assessment, that helps for them to reduce the cost as an offset to their premium, but not directly, you know, into the premium. Recruitment, hiring, and onboarding, again, is something that we are continuing to focus on this year. We've done a lot of good work last year and the year before on that, but we're really leaning in quite a bit more. We developed a tool that actually sets out guidelines for every single recruitment that we do, and it sets out expectations for everyone that's involved, hiring supervisors, HR. If we want to have someone here at a specific date, working backwards, everyone knows very clearly what their level of responsibility is, and that's been very helpful for us to make sure that we get things done a lot more timely. We're working also on improving our branding, the recruitment resources, and we're also looking more into LinkedIn this particular year for some of the more professional jobs. And people apply via NeoGov, and we're actually doing some work on a new onboarding module within NeoGov. We're pretty excited about that. That'll help with some of that early paperwork to get done well before someone even necessarily comes onboard, so we're toying with whether or not there's any level of upfront training. There's just a lot of ideas that we have on how we're going to build out that onboarding, and that work will be starting next quarter. And again, performance management, we're continuing to lean in as it pertains to setting those year-round expectations and communications. The training and development, that's a key retention tool. We're spending a lot of time in that, in helping employees to improve their knowledge, skills, and abilities, as well as adding to the supervisor university. And just a little bit more here, and then we are through this. With workers' comp, we want to maintain a workers' comp experience rating of below 1.0, and as you may be aware, we are now at 0.9, and it's the first time we have been there in many, many years. Best part about that is our employees go home safely to their families. That is the biggest benefit that you can possibly have. The lower your, it's called an E-mod, the lower your E-mod goes. Of course, that also helps with premiums. This is a lot of work that Brennan's been doing. We've come a really long way. Back in 2015, our E-mod was at 1.31, and from 2015 until today, we have progressively been bringing that number down more and more, and so we're really happy to be where we are right now. This has everything to do with a significant shift in cultural expectations of safety. There's an excellent safety team that is here that works with Brennan, and Brennan has done a really good job of putting accountabilities into the safety team members. So, they don't just show up monthly and, hey, we have a meeting, and it's cool. They actually put in accountabilities, and they go out there and they do a lot of very, very good work. They do a lot of training, a lot of toolbox, for example, toolbox conversations, and they redeveloped the incentive program, and that has been playing out very well for employees, various ways that they can get points, that they can just, they can later cash in for some dollars, for some gift cards down the road, and that has really helped with changing the culture of safety as well. And this starts the day someone is new hired, so not only do they hear about it in new hire orientation, but they also will have their workstations or wherever it is that they're working, an ergonomic assessment that is done early on, and so it's just a strong safety focus that's there as well. And you heard about the wellness program, so the risk and wellness programs now are getting much more into alignment because they are just so synergistic with one another. Brennan also put together a vehicle safety defensive driving program last year, which has brought down our accident numbers as well for city vehicles, and one of the big things we'll be focusing on in the second quarter on is a larger organizational ADA compliance program, and we really need to determine what the scope of that's going to be because that's going to be well outside of just HR. That's an entire citywide program, and so Brennan's going to be one of the people that's going to be on that particular team. So, that is what I have for you tonight, and do you have any questions?
Great. Thank you. Does Council have any questions? Mr. Douglas?
Yes. Thank you for your presentation. I had, since you're here, I've talked to City Manager Brian Boom about our hiring practices and all that, and you guys do the hiring for the open positions in the city, correct?
Yes, sir.
I was going to challenge him, since you're here, to challenge you, if you'd like to see more minorities in supervising roles. I know we do hire them, it's, you know, coming at entry level and all that, but I would like to see upper management a little more like what we see here on the dais. That would be great to have more diverse upper management for Commerce City.
Absolutely, and that's one that we do have, we do have some focus on. It's interesting. We do need to be posting out where it is, that whatever the position is, is where a candidate's going to go. So, if it's engineering, we post out to the engineering websites and magazines and wherever it is that we're going to go, you know, to get any particular position. A few years back, we actually did a posting that was strictly for Commerce City residents, for example, because we really wanted within PD for there to be much more of a mirror as to what it is that, you know, we wanted the PD to mirror much more of the community, I guess is a good way of putting that. And by the time we got through the process with all of the requirements, unfortunately, we didn't get as many minorities as we had hoped that we were going to, and so that's something that we will continue to work on. We need to go to the places where people will look in order to apply, and then, you know, of course, people are going to need to be qualified, meet the minimum qualifications of those positions. It continues to be a challenge, and we will continue to work on that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Tater?
Thank you, Mrs. Blakeman, for your presentation. Very informative. I like the idea that you are still trying to get the best qualified people out there, and I know from the people I've talked to within the city, they're very happy with your department and the effort you've put in, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Wadiola?
Thank you. Great job on all the programs. I think it's especially the health and wellness, I think, and the reward package. I do got a couple of things. Mr. Douglas hit on city employees, city residents. Do you know the percentage or the layout of how many of our employees are residents?
Yes.
Or could we get that information?
Yes, it's kind of interesting. The people that are full-time equivalents, there are about 20 percent of them are residents here, and then when you go to VHEs, it's a higher percent. I'm wanting to say about 30-something and some change, but by the time you get to VHEs, it's closer to about 54 percent are actually residents here within Commerce City.
Okay. Thank you. And what's the evaluation process for all employees? Is it the same for all departments, or every department has a different evaluation process? We're looking and changing the city attorneys and city judges and city managers' evaluation. What are you guys using, or what's the process or program?
Those three are kind of unique. We do something very different with them, but for the rest of the organization, we have a very standardized program, and so, as I had mentioned a few years back, we reevaluated the entire program. If you're talking strictly about the evaluation portion, we have a new tool. It's really, really awesome. It starts out with a setting of expectations early in the year. We called that a phase one, and so those expectations are set out, and it gives the opportunity for employees and supervisors to talk about those things throughout the entire year, and there's actually mid-year reviews that happen, and these are very standardized. We go through values. We go through knowledge, skills, and abilities, so there's various sections that everyone in the city will actually fill out. They do a self-assessment, and then supervisors will use the same form, but then the supervisors will also do an evaluation, and then they have a communication about that. So, it is very standardized. We have done significant training. There's a, we have a, if you're interested in seeing it, we have a great manual that's completely documented out with the guidelines and suggested, you know, hints for everyone in the organization.
Cool. And what's the complaint process? So, if an employee is having issues with the supervisor, what is the process that HR has to help that employee? Is it, what do they do?
Obviously, we hope that employees and supervisors have a relationship such that they can work those things out first. We would always empower a supervisor and employee to have that conversation first. It's going to depend on what the actual complaint is as to how they're being handled. Many of them, we may have either an employee that comes in that may have an issue that's going on, and many times then, we will help for them to make a determination as to how they can best, we empower them as to how they can, you know, best handle it. If it comes from a supervisor, it may be the same thing. We may give various coaching or methodologies to help for them to not only hold an employee accountable, but do it in a way that makes sense for them to be able to be supportive. That's for the day-to-day sort of, you know, complaint or issue that may go on. If it gets more significant than that, then we have very standardized procedures that we could go through, and it would start in with HR, and we could either get them both together, depending what the issue is, and work that through. Again, we try to handle it at the lowest level possible, keep the people empowered, but if you actually get into then a formal grievance issue, we have a whole process behind that as well, and that's documented out.
Okay, and the last thing I have is, do you do retention reports for every department or holistic look at the whole city?
Are you talking about tracking turnover by each particular department?
Yeah, turnover to retention, how many people are leaving and why are they leaving?
Yeah, we do, and we do have that by department. We don't necessarily always know a real reason that an employee might leave, but we have a pretty good idea as they leave as to what that might be. We don't formally track it in every single department, but they have an opportunity to sit with someone within HR, and we have an exit interview process, and so we capture a lot of information there as well.
Is that not mandatory, the exit interview?
It should be mandatory, but sometimes employees will just say, hey, I really don't have much to say. They'll still come in, and they'll still go through the normal process about their benefits and those sorts of things, but they have, they can decline if they would like to, but we try to encourage them to give us input.
Cool. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much, Kathy, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Move into Administrative Council business. There are a couple before you. Sponsorship funding requests. I'll start off with the one that I brought forward. It's for the 2018 Annual Armed Forces Recognition Luncheon at the Doubletree Hotel. A lady in our community has been very involved for many years putting this program together. She reached out to me some time ago and said she was upset and wondered why we weren't participating in the Armed Forces Recognition Lunch, because there were folks from our community that play a role in that organization. So, they sent me over the So they sent me over the invitation to participate. I wanted to bring that before council and see if there's anybody on council that wanted to attend and at what level council would want to attend for the May 4th Armed Forces Recognition Luncheon. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, I wouldn't mind attending that.
Is there interest from anybody else? I mean, to interest in getting a table or just have some individual tickets? But would like to have some representation there from the city. Mr. Teeter wants to go, would you be taking a spouse with you?
On a Friday, no, that will be, that won't happen. But Mr. Benjamin, I think if he's in town, would probably like to go with it also.
I think Mr. Hughesman would probably want to go as well.
Yes.
And then on top of that, we can make a donation as well, but it looks like tickets are somewhere around $40 apiece. If we set aside enough money for a couple of people to go to and then maybe make a nominal donation to the organization so that we are participating in, I believe, a good cause. I would be open for a motion to allow for whatever the council desires regarding the Armed Forces Luncheon. Mr. Teeter?
I'll make the motion to buy whatever tickets we need for staff as well as the council to attend as if they so desire.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Madera?
I'll second that.
My motion is second to purchase tickets necessary for council members as well as any staff members that want to participate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'll let Mr. Douglas go over his request.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the annual spring out for homelessness gala. And we've participated this gala in the past, but it's not included in our annual budget item as far as sponsorships and galas and nonprofits that we support. That's currently in our budget. Just like their precious child, that gala, they raised $300,000 on Saturday. The Spring Out Homelessness Gala is one of their largest events. They assists about 1,145 people last year with 596 of them being children. So basically, this money helps set people up for temporary housing or even permanent housing with this event. And so I'm asking, will we can do a table eight? There are other options on the third page for the Bees Knee sponsored for 1,000 for four tickets or just individual tickets. And so asking if the council would like to do a table eight. If anything less, that's fine, but just asking for your support.
All right, does anybody have a desire to make a motion to participate in the spring out of homeless gala?
Make a motion.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes, I think this could be a good program for us to get into and may evaluate what we can do with this homeless thing here. So yes, I'm open to accept a table for 2,000 for eight people.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And the second is for Mr. Douglas for a $2,000 purchase of a table for eight to the gala event on May 18.
Just for clarification, Mayor, it appears that the cost of a table for eight is $3,000.
What I have before me on the request is $2,000.
It's 2,000. I see that now. There's another one for a table of eight above it for 3,000.
Okay, so this will be a table of eight for $2,000 of a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we'll go into any additional administrative council business. Mr. Teeter?
Sorry, Mayor.
That's right. Councilman Madera?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, the council directs staff to research and report to the council regarding opportunities for improvement of public education in the city.
Want to expand on that just a little bit?
Yeah, so just being a lifetime Commerce City resident and going through the education system here in Commerce City, I'd like to look into improving our public education and seeing if there's anything that the city can do to help improve the public education within Commerce City. So within that, I'd like to direct the staff to research and report back in regards to any opportunities for that.
Okay, I just want to make sure the staff's understanding what the desire is.
Yes, I believe that staff is understanding of what Councilman Madera is asking for and is willing to do some research and report back to council.
Right, so I have a motion, is there a second? Mr. Diaz?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. I'd like to go and discussion before we call for the vote. I don't disagree, Mr. Madera. I think that we all, especially those of us that went through the public education system here in Commerce City, would like to see some improvements. I want to make sure if there's something that we can do, whether that's through supporting more charter-type opportunities, whatever that may be, continuing to support our public education system, which we know we all support, but we know that it's fractured at a certain level and needs to be repaired. I think we're all on board for that and I'd like to see that happen as well. I want to make sure that the district doesn't identify this as negative of us coming at them in a derogatory manner. So that's the reason I wanted the discussion, to make sure that they know that we also identify that there's a need for additional opportunities within our community and that we're supportive of those additional opportunities, up to and including the public education system improvements. So I'm willing to support your cause. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Teeter?
Yes, I will be supporting this, but I would also like the staff to show exactly what we already do so that council seated now will have an idea of what we actually do, participate to school district 14 and so when it comes time to make the decision.
And that would include 27J?
And 27J, yes.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I just want to also underwrite that the community, there's an outcry that we look at what kind of options there are as far as the city when it comes to support AMs 14, 27J. I know we've had meetings and there's ballot measures, we well supported, we want to make sure we're doing the same for AMs 14. We also want to make sure the information that we receive from the board is consistent on what the Board of Education feels as well, with the body of five. And I feel there's some things that are, have been put out to the public that are not clear. And I want to make sure that when we get behind AMs 14, that we are in understanding that we're all going forward in the same footstep and we're talking the same. Because I think things are not lined up right. And I think we need to make sure that going forward, even though we do not oversee our education here in the city, it does reflect us as a city. And so we have to make sure that both education institutes that are teaching our kids, these are our kids that our taxes go to, making sure our efforts go beyond just what we have here, so.
All right, is there any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, for clarification's sake, for staff, a timeframe that you all will be looking in and get this information and research back to you. And if I could make a recommendation, it'd be at least 30 days to give staff the opportunity to thoroughly research this and get back with the council.
Is that acceptable to the motion maker?
That's acceptable.
How about the second? Yep, perfect. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Is there, let's see, Councilwoman Frank?
So I had sent an email to everyone regarding the Civic Academy and so I was hoping to get, that everyone had had an opportunity to review that and I was hoping to get a motion to move forward with the pilot program regarding that, or if anybody had questions.
What would the pilot program consist of for the city's requirement?
It would actually be a series, basically of seven weeks of classes with the next week being a graduation ceremony, but it would be with the purpose and intent of having residents go through the program and understand the different city functions, the different programs that we offer, the different, all the different things about the city. And hopefully that they would put, you know, they would be able to, when communicating with other residents, they're putting out the correct information. Again, just more ways to get the word out about Commerce City and what we do and the services that we offer.
And we, I don't know, when I was reading it, I thought it really laid out what the Leadership Academy does.
No.
I don't know what the differences are between the two. And so I would ask, I would ask Michelle how they're different, how they're the same and how adding in another, another opportunity would be beneficial.
Mayor, for the members of council, the proposed pilot Civic Academy would be an evening event, really targeting a different group of residents compared to the day-long leadership program. This would be a condensed pilot to really test it as Councilwoman Frank talked about and see what works, maybe the times or differentials, but really trying to get a very quick, high-level two-hour, seven-week program versus the 10-month full-day program. And the hope, I think, of Councilwoman Frank and Councilman Douglas is that this will spur people to dive deeper into a potential leadership program. But this is really meant to be a high-level, quick hit, and that's what the program outlined that has been provided. So the pilot is really to test whether or not this concept would work and then we can make an evaluation for future years.
Great, thank you, that helps. All right, is there a motion?
I got some question, want to add.
Okay. Questions? Go to Mr. Douglas first.
Thank you. Yeah, I had, me and Councilwoman Frank been working on this with Michelle Halsted. We appreciate your work, Michelle. You know, we had a while back, oh, I'm sorry, a while back, last year, there was informational meeting deals with taxes, had to deal with the metro districts, the state and the city. And people were then asking, what about the city? How does the city function? We get a lot of, I'd say, someone else's problems, it's our problems, like maybe deal with the county, maybe deal with the state. People are not clear on how our city actually functions and what the, what the necessary, what are the services that we provide and how those services are utilized. So basically, you know, we're talking about residential services, code enforcement, street sweeping, trash recycling, parks, wrecks and golf, the water, refuge art, passports, growth and development, our land use zoning, economic development, capital improvement projects. Financing would be a budget, taxing, metro districts, urban renewals, public safety, police department, our fire departments, both school districts. And then we have emerging issues, maybe around oil and gas, trains, ballot measures. And so, so that's why this is more focused on the citizens of the city and our daily operations and getting people to know what's happened. Because, you know, we have our town hall meetings we have on the phone and all that. This year will focus on certain departments, and this is coming from department heads, this is not coming from someone on the outside, this is actually city employees. And so that's why this is much different than the leadership Commerce City. That's more based on a little bit of the city, but nonprofits and outside of the city borders as well. This right here is more internal and with the city where people, as far as the tax dollars, this is, there's no charge for this. The amount that's going to be to fund this is very minimal. And I hope this is successful and it's more of a weekly thing, it's a short synopsis instead of stringing things out. So it's more of a commitment for our residents and, you know, because all the people are asking questions, just the way they can, they can, I'd say, have skin in the game and participate and take the time and develop and get that knowledge. Because people are so unaware of what's going on because we're so fast-paced here. People are just, you know, they're relying on social media and everything else, but at least the questions are in people's minds when this comes up for the different sessions, they can ask those important questions. So I thought by working together with Councilman Frank and Michelle Halsted, that this is what we came up with and I think this would be a great pilot to roll out. If this is approved, it would start out here in September this year.
Great, thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, I think you answered a couple of my questions, Steve. You said there's no cost for this?
No cost.
And staff time is fine with it, Michelle?
We have a pretty high-level estimate that's been included. We were waiting for you to officially approve it, that it should be fairly minimal.
Okay, I guess my last question is, are we going to put this, what's the number of people we're going to stop at or at least have to have to continue?
So a pilot program essentially tests not only the curriculum, but the interest. So our proposal with that would be that each of you would recommend at least two people for a class of 18 to really give us some really good feedback. So we would say 18 to 20, I think, is what we were thinking. But the hope is that each of you could recommend some folks through an application process and make sure we get good feedback before we decide to move fully forward.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Diaz?
I think any way that we can educate the residents on how processes work, I'm all about that. So if there's no further discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
I got one more. Mr. Wadiola?
Could we go through it? Because, I mean, the orientation I went through with youth commission, we still don't know. I mean, I, we want to know more about what's going on.
I would defer to both council members. This is their idea, we just helped facilitate.
Of course, Jose, you can get in. I'll recommend you.
He's going to recommend him, yeah.
All right, I'm going to go back to Mr. Diaz, he was prepared to make a motion.
Sure, I move to proceed with the Civics Academy pilot program.
All right, is there a second? Mr. Madera?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Moving on with administrative council business. Mr. Diaz?
I just wanted to thank, I assume it's you, Michelle, regarding to, I'm one of the council members for the Regional Air Quality Council. And a couple of days ago, I sent an email over to Brian McBroom regarding their mowed-down pollution program, which is an exchange program to trade in your gas-powered mower for a battery-powered mower. Their first of three events this year is actually held at Dick's Sporting Goods Park on Saturday, May 5th. And the reason why I'm thanking you, Michelle, I assume it's you, is Brian, I know passed it along to staff a couple of days ago and I know that it's already been posted, so I appreciate any communication that you guys are able to do to push forward this effort, especially because it's right in our backyard. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Douglas?
I just wanted to add to that. I have participated in that program in the past and did purchase a cordless mower and it works great. Says 30 minutes of time I could, per charge, I can mow the yard front and back three times before I have to charge it up. So it's worth, it's well worth the investment.
Great, thank you. What is that, what's the average cost of when you trade in?
Well, if you trade it in, you, the top one's like 195 and the lower end, chartless, cordless, chartless, cordless mower, I think it's like 135, 160.
So if you bring a gas mower for
Yep.
Between 135, 160, $200, you can upgrade?
Right, and if you don't have the trade-in, I think it's 235, 240. Right, and if you don't have the trade-in, I think it's, uh, two hundred and thirty-five, two hundred and forty dollars.
Yeah, you save about fifty dollars by bringing in your old mower.
Mm-hmm. And, and the, and the voltage, I mean, they have one, it's what, fifty-six volts, uh, versus thirty, so it's
What day is that?
It's, uh, May
It's Saturday, May 5th.
Thank you. So, the folks at home could hear.
Oh, sure, um, it's Saturday, May 5th, and also you would need to register online, so they know how many mowers that they would need to bring, and it does sell out, so.
Very fast.
Alright, thank you both. Any other administrative council business before I move on on the agenda? Saying none. We'll go to reports. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. You do have a fairly lengthy city manager report that was provided this evening, I'll highlight a couple of the items for you and, um, let you all read the details, uh, in the report as it's attached. The first one's a gas and oil update. Uh, the city has been advised that extraction oil and gas will be plugging an abandoned well uh, just south of Ninety-S sixth Avenue and west of Tower Road. The rig structure that would be utilized for plugging the well will look very much like a drilling platform, and as a result, we want to communicate with you all and with residents that this is a plugging operation, not a drilling operation. Um, and to encourage that and get further information out, we intend to put this on our website in the gas and oil section and also communicate via social media platforms. You have some information about the North Range Loop Trail Project, which, again, our emphasis this year has been making connections between neighborhoods and the new Bison Ridge Recreation Center. Um, in particular, this evening, we're sharing information with you about a letter that will go out to a portion of this trail which backs up to homes in the city of Brighton. Brighton City Council will give this information, uh, later this week as well, um, but staff from the city of Commerce City's Parks and Recreation Department and, and Commerce City and those in Brighton have been working together to notify the residents that the proposed design of one of our trails that would get residents from the west side of I-76 over to the Bison Ridge Rec Center would run along, um, the canal, which run, runs through Fuller Estates neighborhood. So, you have the letter that would go out to residents there seeking their input and advice, uh, before the trail's actually constructed. Uh, Highway 2 is open, as you are aware. Um, last week, there were some questions about the acceleration lanes being removed on Highway 2. Uh, those acceleration lanes that were put on Highway 2 were an interim measure while the roadway was in its old configuration. Part of the design process was to utilize those acceleration lanes as part of the increase in the travel lanes of the roadway. Um, there's some information here that that, uh, was included in CDOT's plan all along, and we adopted those design standards when we took the road over. Um, so, in an effort to address council's concerns from last week, staff has ensured that yield signs are clearly visible, uh, in all locations, as that traffic has to merge as it's coming on to Highway 2 at a number of locations, and flags have been added for a temporary warning for motorists to those. And there's a picture of what staff's done to draw motorists' attention to the need to yield. In addition, in that same update, um, there were some questions about the lighting on Highway 2 being on during the daytime. That's been on purpose. Uh, those lights need a burn-in period, and as soon as that burn-in period is complete, the lights will resume normal function, which only burned during the evening hours. Next, in the report, Mayor Ford had requested some additional information regarding the use of OSB products in residential construction and the fire safety associated with that project. Um, we outlined a great deal of information in the report for you related to the use of OSB, um, which I learned is an acronym for Oriented Strand Board. I did not know that, um, and I do now. Um, at the end of the day, the issue we believe we identified had to do with I-Joist. And I-Joists are used in residential construction because they are much lighter in weight, and they actually are stronger than traditional wood lumber. Um, there was recently a code change that required ceilings, basements and crawl spaces to be covered with either drywall to protect those joists or, um, a product be applied to them to increase, uh, the fire retardant nature of those I-Joists. Uh, that fire retardant, um, material, it was called Flak Jacket, that's the consumer name of it. Um, and that appeared in about thirty-five homes in Commerce City. The result of the application of that product was that some homeowners were complaining about smells and formaldehyde. Um, the company has worked with builders to replace, uh, or repair those homes. Again, we had thirty-five of them in our community. Um, and based on the, the company's complaints they've received and litigation that they're involved in, um, they have changed the chemical compound that is used, uh, to ply that flak jacket material and fixed the issues associated with the smell, and as a result, city staff, uh, does not recommend that we ban the use of that flak jacket product, um, or anything related to OSB, uh, products in our homes in Commerce City and that no code changes are necessary.
Thank you.
Next, uh, online sales tax, uh, collection update. Uh, last summer, Councilman Dougmas- Douglas had asked about the possibility of adding that capability to our tax system. Um, at the time, we let you all know that CML was working on a project that had delayed us from implementing, um, an online tax filing system. Uh, during the supplemental appropriation process last year, uh, the finance department asked for and was approved seventeen thousand, three hundred and ten dollars for the purposes of adding that functionality with our existing vendor. That project started right away, and, um, there were some challenges identified with our current vendor in terms of meeting our system and functionality requirements that were desired for businesses in our community. Um, as a result, the IT department and the tax division have done a complete assessment of not only our existing system, but the functionality of systems that are available on the open market, and we've come to the conclusion that doing an RFP to replace our entire tax system software is the best solution for us to add this functionality. That change in scope will not only change the price, but the timeline for implementing, uh, this functionality, and we hope to be able to implement that by the end of 2018. Um, and we have explored several funding sources that are available to cover the increased scope and that cost. Uh, Councilman Hughesman inquired about the possibility of paving a soft-surface trail on the west side of Chambers north of the King Supers site, and in fact, um, city council authorized the paving of that trail. Just as an update, um, at the time that you all approved that, we had estimated that work could be done for about fifty thousand dollars. The bid that we received back from our current concrete contractor is one hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. As a result of, of that pricing, um, city staff is moving forward with paving that section of trail using asphalt material, and we believe we can get that done for about twenty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars plus soft costs associated with staff time and still re-maintain, uh, the budget commitment that you all had asked for. Um, it should be noted that the, in the future, the, the developer or adjacent property owner will be responsible for paving the sidewalk in concrete in its final configuration. Also attached, uh, to tonight's city manager report is the capital improvement program update, legislative report from Week Thirteen, uh, in addition to the letter going to Fuller Estates residents and the city council work schedule. That's all of my report tonight.
Thank you. And we'll go to, uh, our attorney's office with Rachel Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report for the city attorney tonight.
It was your chance to shine, Rachel. Robert would have been proud.
He's, I'm sure he's still proud. We're working on many exciting things, many of which you will hear about in the upcoming executive session.
I'm just giving you a hard time. Um, to start off my reports, first of all, I want to, uh, thank Troy and Rachel for standing in this evening for, uh, the city manager and for our city attorney. Uh, you both did a great job tonight, and Michelle's right there to make sure that you guys don't step out of line. So, thanks, Michelle. Um, my report, so I, I had a meeting with Seawald Handfling Company, um, last week. Rotary, um, I, I think the highlight of my week last week was, uh, the DMR, which is the Denver Metro Area Regulators Association Panel at, um, Brittany Hill, and I served on that panel with Herb Agsterson, the mayor of Westminster, and, uh, Heidi Williams, the mayor of Thornton. Talked about housing needs, housing types, what we're seeing with, um, construction defects, how it's affecting our communities. It was several hours long. Um, Michelle Halsted got me, uh, plenty of information to be able to share, but, um, still a challenge in our area trying to get multifamily for-sale product is, uh, extremely hard in the metro area. So, uh, it's down to like two percent, um, for the whole metropolitan area, which is not good given the housing needs that we have. Also, a large, uh, part of the conversation surrounded, I believe it's Amendment Sixty-Six or, or, is that what it's called, Amendment Sixty-Six? The, uh, no growth or, or reduced growth, uh, measure that, um, is being looked at to be put on the ballot. If that gets put on the ballot, that would restrict ten counties and all the cities within those counties to one percent of their previous year's growth. And as you know, we hit about a thousand homes last year, is, is about the number we were at, near a thousand. We should be somewhere around eleven, twelve hundred this, this year, I would guess. Um, to, to take our growth down to a hundred homes would be, um, a, a large impact on our community. So, it's one we need to watch to see if that gets put on the ballot. But, uh, that pretty much covers my panel discussion for last, uh, Wednesday. Had an ACC meeting, uh, the same day, and also Rotary the same day. And then, several of our council members attended a precious child, uh, event, um, Saturday, right?
Yes.
Saturday night. I did want to congratulate, um, Joe Doertie on his retirement. I've been here a long time. I knew him when I was an employee many, many years ago, and then as the mayor for many years. But I, uh, respect the man and I, I wish him well in his future endeavors. And that will conclude my report. If anybody has anything they'd like to add, now is the time to do so. Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yes, thank you. Just wanted to add, I'm on the E-470 board and, um, this coming September 1st, vehicle registration fee, um, bond will, will, uh, mature then, and you can either keep that fee as it is or end it, and, uh, I'm looking at, uh, voting to end it. But basically, this was enacted in nineteen eighty-eight, um, for the counties of Rappahoe, Adams and Douglas County, and it affects the people within a mile and a half center on E-470, forty-seven miles from the north to the south. And so, that goes for a registration fee for each vehicle that you register, um, in the county, and, uh, if you live along that, that boundary there. And of course, um, that affects most people on the boundary in, up in the northern area, um, not so much down here in the southern part of Commerce City. Uh, they collect on average ten million dollars a year, and if you figure over thirty years, that's almost three hundred million dollars. And, um, so it's, it has paid for as far as, um, the buy-in from the different counties, um, but for people who do not use E-470, it's been, uh, you know, ten dollars is ten dollars. So, by removing this, um, it will not affect, um, their service, is, is their, their service plan as, as far as their debt payments. Um, they will continue, um, to do so as far as, uh, debt servicing, and this will, this is, I think, pretty much makes up nine, less than one percent of their, uh, revenue for E-470, so, uh, that's good news. Um, also, just two months ago, we voted to freeze the, um, the amount that folks pay when they use a tollway, but the license plate toll went up fifty percent. So, uh, freezing one and, and, and L.A. rate went up, but, uh, that's just a news I have. And I just wanted to also say for the precious child, um, it was a great showing, appreciate everybody's, uh, support from, from Commerce City, but they did raise, last year they raised two hundred and fifty thousand, this year they raised three hundred thousand dollars, and I mean, that's, that's tremendous.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to also speak about, uh, the retirement party for Joe Doertie. Um, Joe was on the street for thirty-seven years. I was on the street for thirty-four with the fire department. Uh, we did work very closely together, whether it was helping the PD out or them helping us out on scenes, and, uh, Joe, to me, is one of the most professional policemen that I've seen in a long time. Even back in the days when, um, you were allowed to, well, not allowed to, but we did go a little bit overboard at times on the scene, the PD would on different things, but he never pushed it. He always went to the limit and he stopped there. He, um, he was a great, um, great, uh, person to show Commerce City for the PD. I mean, you can't believe the amount of, uh, things that he did for the city. Uh, I, I'd like to commend staff for putting the presentation on as well as the chief. Um, it was a great showing, and I got to see a lot of the old retired policemen that also showed up, so it was actually a, really a great time here last Friday. Thank you, Chief.
Councilman Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I too attended the ceremony. I got here towards the latter part of it. Um, had the opportunity to meet, uh, Mr. Doertie's wife, who stood by his side for those thirty-seven years, so I congratulated her as well, um, on his retirement. Uh, just a brief synopsis, we had our emergency services task course meeting last week, and this was held at the, um, Adams County, uh, building there in Brighton. Um, and I just want to say, you know, we are definitely gaining momentum on this. Um, we did have Adams County staff present, um, a plethora of information. Um, Ms. Halsted was there in attendance. She was on my, my left side, so she's my left, left-hand gal here. Um, and you could chime in if you need to, but, um, just, just the information that they provided for us were the services that Adams County is currently, um, not only providing but implementing, but of course, the outcry from our community is, is still the emergency services for those that are in need. And so, um, I was really impressed with the maps that they provided with, uh, the different services, anywhere from Medicaid assistance, um, food assistance, um, and, and it was actually really impressive that, uh, the concentration of the clients were, were according to per square mile. And so, uh, in moving forward, there is definite interest in a, in a collaboration. Um, Community Reach, uh, was there as well, the, uh, CEO and his assistant. Um, and so there's, there's still a strong interest for a partnership with the city and the outside, um, organizations, both nonprofit and for-profit. So, um, I definitely just want to encourage anyone who, who wishes to attend. I know you do get the meetings on a regular basis, but, uh, this is gaining much more momentum, because now we're, we're able to dial in as far as, um, you know, what it is that we can, we can approach. I know that there was talk of the Adams County Human Services Building there on Seventy-second and, and Colorado Boulevard. Um, I think that's something we need to probably look into further, I mean, based on staff, uh, research. I know that there is a buyer that's interested, but it's also a buyer that's interested with partnerships with nonprofits. And so, um, while that's not necessarily on the horizon right now, I don't necessarily want to take that off the table, but it's just still a matter of just looking for a location to house these nonprofits that are currently doing the work in our city. So, um, I just wanted to, you know, give a little bit of insight on that, and, um, we look forward to our next meeting. We haven't secured a date for May, but it seems like the, uh, I believe it was the second or third Wednesday of the month seems to work well for everyone. Um, we had thirteen people in attendance, so, uh, which is pretty impressive. So, just wanted to provide that information, and also everyone, anyone who's interested, um, you're welcome to attend or, you know, maybe we can chat over lunch or coffee and kind of give a more detailed, uh, insight of what we're trying to accomplish with this task force. Thank you.
Thank you. There be nothing further to come before us, I am open for a motion to enter into two executive sessions, both pursuant to CRS twenty-four-dash-six, dash, four-oh-two, Pairs Four, Pairs B, and Pairs E, for the purpose of really receiving legal advice to developing strategy for negotiations and instructing, negotiating of receiving legal advice to developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators concerning noise issues arising out of the 1988 IGA with the city and county of Denver. Mr. Teeter.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, will be in executive session for the remainder of our meeting, and then we'll come out and close the meeting out. Thank you all for coming this evening.